Welcome to the City Council, May 1, City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with all City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce the staff and the City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, Councilmember Catherine Carlton, Councilmember Ray Mueller, Councilmember Betsy Nash. And for staff, present is our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk, Ms. Judy Heron. City Clerk, Ms. Heron, would you please provide instruction to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will be conducted?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and good evening, City Council, and members of the public who are with us this evening. Thank you for taking your time out to join us. In handling this meeting, we are going to ask that the City Council remain on screen for the duration. Staff will engage their webcams when they have a presentation or questions are asked of them of the City Council. For public comment this evening, we are asking that anyone here, for public comment, engage their hand icon, which should be to the, on your right side of your screen in your toolbar. So when the mayor calls for a public comment on an item, that's when you'll have your opportunity to raise your hand. You will then unmute your microphone and you'll be given the opportunity to address City Council for public comment that was received via the web form described in the agenda. It has been attached to the agenda for public viewing as well as the City Council's view. We will repeat all of this for each public comment item. Thank you.
Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
I did not receive any public comment on consent. So at this time, if anyone is here, oh, we have to do roll call. I apologize. Oh, we've done?
We did.
Yes. My apologies. It's consent calendar. So if anyone here is wanting to speak on the consent calendar, review and confirm the needs for continuing local emergency, please engage that hand icon in the right side of your screen. And seeing none, we can continue.
Okay. So on the consent calendar, we have to review and confirm the need for continuing the local emergency. And do I have a motion and a second?
Thank you. Seeing a motion by Councilmember Nash, a second by Councilmember Carlton, by roll call vote to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
Councilmember Nash?
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor? Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Bless you. All right.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first item on the agenda is D1, Provide Direction on Reactivating Construction Work and Related Inspections. To introduce this item is our interim City Attorney, Ms. Cara Silver.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the City Manager, as Emergency Services Officer, issued an executive order banning construction. We have heard from members of the public that they would like this order to be modified. The Council has also indicated some desire to modify this order. And I believe that Justin Murphy is going to be addressing the merits of the construction issue this evening. Justin?
Yes, I'm on my way.
Great.
You're walking up to the podium, aren't you?
Yes, I'm exactly. Yes, so, good afternoon, Mayor Taylor and City Council. Are people able to see my screen right now?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay, great. Okay. So, yes, good afternoon. So as Cara indicated, I'm going to walk through where we are in terms of reactivating construction and then the related inspections that go along with construction activity. So this is just a quick background over the past couple of months. And this does reflect quite a bit of collective sacrifice, I would say. And, but I, hopefully, there were fruits of that sacrifice that enable us to move forward with certain types of construction activity. So I'll highlight on March 23rd, so about six weeks ago, that is when the city, as a local action, suspended all, effectively, all construction activity in Menlo Park. And then, most recently, on April 29th, the county issued an updated health order to allow construction activity per safety protocols effective Monday, May 4th. So just to kind of restate the various orders that are currently in place as issued by the City of Menlo Park through our Director of Emergency Services, which is also our City Manager. That first order was on March 23rd, suspending, temporarily suspending all construction activity. And then we had two other orders, one related to closing certain public facilities and then specifically closing Bedwell Bayfront Park. And so what we're talking about today is a fourth order, which would reactivate construction activity. And that would then rescind and supersede order number one. So order number four, which is attached to the staff report, is attachment A, would reactivate construction activity. So it's just before midnight on Sunday, 11:59 PM, Sunday, May 3rd, so it would be effective May 4th. It would allow construction activity provided complies with the safety protocols published by San Mateo County. So these are protocols established by the health officer, but they would actually be enforced by local Menlo Park Police Department. Within the order, there is, the City Manager is reserving the right to modify the order under certain circumstances if necessary. So if conditions change, especially as it relates to the, to the health emergency, again, the city has the local authority to make future modifications. So, excuse me. Sorry. In terms of resuming the inspection activities, so the focus collectively throughout this is on the safety of our inspectors and the construction workers at all the various construction sites. So that's, that's paramount throughout this. As part of that, the city is going to be embarking on a pilot program for virtual inspections to assist through this. There are certain types of inspections where that could potentially work well. I wouldn't say it's necessarily for all inspections, but certain inspections, we're going to be offering that as a pilot program through this emergency. So this is one of the key things I'd like to differentiate is construction activity can begin as of Monday. The key thing that the city offers are the inspections as a construction project progresses. And so that's where we are looking to establish some priorities of how we would be offering those inspection services. And these are outlined in, in the order. But I'm just going to reiterate them here that the projects that are, were already scheduled for inspection prior to the shutdown would receive the first priority. And then we would focus on projects that were granted in emergency status over the past six weeks. And then we would move to projects that affect the livability of a residential unit. Then we would focus on all other single-family residential projects and the city's public works projects. And so we think that most of those, based off the volumes that we're aware of, could be accommodated the week of May 4th. And then we would target allowing construction inspections for all other projects, so mainly multifamily residential, large mixed-use, commercial projects, the week of May 11th. So the, this, the city routinely requires scheduling of inspection. There's a lead time, so we would begin the process of allowing people to request the inspections. And this is how we would roll it out over the next two weeks. So throughout this period, we will have city staff reporting to City Hall to be able to perform these duties. Our city inspectors check in at the, in the building, beginning of the day. At the end of the day, we do have some permit technicians involved with handling of the issuance and revisions, things like that. But City Hall would remain closed, and then there'd be opportunities for limited appointments for current permit holders. So again, we're focused on the, what's expected over the next couple of weeks. And as things progress, we'll be able to involve and expand services. So with that, the recommendation is for the City Council to provide any direction on staff's intent to reactivate construction work as outlined in order number four, which is attachment A to the staff report. So upon receiving feedback from the City Council and the intent for the Director of Emergency Services, City Manager, would be to issue that order later this afternoon so that everybody is aware of what's, what's available as of Monday, May 4. So with that, we do have a number of staff available to field questions. We do have the City Attorney, the Police Chief, our Building Official. So there'll be maybe a team that will assist me, assist me with questions. And there's a large team behind all of this and kind of making this happen. So really, really proud of everybody working on this to be able to deliver this service again, starting on, on Monday. With that, I'll stop. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from the Council? Okay. At this time, Ms. Heron, do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, we will ask members of the public to engage their hand feature on the right side of their screen. And we will be able to call on you. At this time, Mayor Taylor, I'm seeing two raised hands. The first person with their hand up was Chris Guerrero.
Is Mr. Guerrero available to make the public comment, Ms. Heron?
Chris, are you able to engage your microphone to deliver your public comment? I'm not able to see his end. We'll go ahead, and it looks like he might have put down his hand. We can go to the next public comment, which is Jacqueline Court.
Hi.
You're unmuted. Perfect, thank you.
Y'all can hear me. Great. So I noticed that it said approval for, or resuming construction for current permit holders. If you're in the situation, the permit is ready, but it hasn't been pulled yet. I am hoping that there's appointments available where that can be done. Is, is that what's anticipated here?
Or has that been? Council cannot respond to questions from public comment. They can direct staff to respond to you. So if you want to, we can request that Council direct that question to staff for response.
Sure. So this would be later on down the road? You send me an email or?
If it's something that staff can do during the meeting, they will. If not, then they will reach out offline.
Okay, great. So, so just for clarification, the question is, if you have a permit that's ready to pull, already approved, but not yet issued, can that be issued in construction permits? So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So this time, do we have any? I didn't see no other raised hands. Oh, we do have one more that has raised their hand. Our next public speaker is Mallory Crawford. Mallory, have engaged her microphone?
Okay.
One, when you're ready, you can address the City Council for your public comment.
Okay. I, my question is, our project was stopped kind of mid-project. So my understanding would be the contractors could resume working, but we may be delayed in getting inspections, depending on where we sit in the, the level of, you know, it may not be next week, it may be the week after. Is that correct?
Hi, Mallory, this is Judy, the City Clerk. Again, the City Council cannot respond to questions during the public comment period. However, they can direct staff to respond.
Okay.
So with your question stated, we can leave that with the Council for them to direct staff to either respond now or return to you with an offline response.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Taylor. Let me just see if there's any other public comment. I am seeing no further raised hands. Nothing in our chat queue, so we can return the meeting to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Mr. Murphy, just in light of the, the two questions with public comment, can you follow up for me?
Yes. So those are, there are two great questions, so thank you for asking them. So with the, the first, first question, in terms of a permit that's ready to be issued, and the city was kind of about to issue that, those are going to be the first ones that we start rolling out. So it's, it's most likely that people in that case will be receiving a call from the city this week, or sorry, next week, saying that their permit's ready to be issued. And we'll start the process of scheduling the appointments to be able to issue those, those permits. So that should, in most cases, if, if they're in a ready-to-be-issued status, that should be a next-week activity that the city would be able to pursue. And then on the second question, yes, the person had, had the right understanding that if they would be authorized to have their contractor come back, start up work again next week, and then it's just a matter of when exactly that inspection would happen. So if it was a residential project that was, there's a pretty good chance that by the end of next week, early the following week, that they'd be able to have that inspection. So those are two great questions, and I'm sure we'll be fielding, having similar type inquiries, and we'll probably be more than happy to help people kind of clarify each of their unique situations. But those are good, two good general questions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So at this time, I wanted to open it up to the Council to see if there were any follow-up questions, concerns. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I believe the county has provided detailed instructions for construction, which will keep everyone safe. And I believe it's appropriate for Menlo Park to be consistent with those guidelines. I'm also very happy to see that staff is looking, are piloting technical solutions. My question is really, in the order, at the very end, it says that the City Manager reserves the right to modify this order if any of the following conditions occur. And the one that I wanted a little more clarification on is the city is not able to provide sufficient building inspectors to satisfy the demand. I'd love to get a few more, a little more information on that and what the, what the modification might be and what the thinking is, please.
Yes, it's, it's a little troubling to think through some of those scenarios, but, so if, if, if our inspectors are sick, would be one example where we would have challenges. We've also, there are, with, with schools closed and childcare facility closed, there's also challenges for people to be, to be able to, to work. So there's other scenarios like that where it may be challenging for the city to fully staff our inspection services. So the good news is, right now, we've got four inspectors that are raring to go. So that, that, that's great. So there may be situations that could change, and that's where we just have to reevaluate.
And so if there's fewer people, it doesn't mean that it would be shut down. It just means that there would be fewer people available for inspections, presumably, unless there's some reason because of the coronavirus that you would want to not have the people out in the field.
Right. So I guess to, to play that out a little bit, if, 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 if our staffing is reduced, but overall, there aren't overall issues regarding the coronavirus, the reason where this, why the city may want to restrict construction is so that construction is not getting too far along without the proper inspections. So then it would, it could be challenging to manage where development projects are in, in the, in the lifecycle. And so that's where it, the city would want to reserve the right to potentially restrict the construction activity. But I'm not envisioning that scenario based off what we know today.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sorry, it just took me a second to figure out how to unmute myself. Um, I really appreciate that staff is always very professional and always wanting to take things slow, and, and I, I think that's great. However, you've all heard me before, and I know the City Attorney is probably sick of hearing me talk about my really deep concerns that a lot of people have who have maybe a house 80, 90% finished, and they've been paused, and they're having to pay so much money to stay in an apartment while their house is, is on pause. And it's caused a lot of financial difficulty for individuals, not only in the middle of wanting to do it, but also who had everything lined up. And so I'm really happy to hear that we're going to go ahead and start issuing more permits. My, my question is, four inspectors, how many inspectors do we have on staff?
Four.
We have four on staff. So these are, so it's not like we're holding back. These are all our inspectors, and, and they'll go out and work.
And just to clarify one thing, there are the four building inspectors. We also have public works inspectors. There's, there's three public works inspectors, but they're looking at different things. So yeah, we're, it's all four of our building inspectors would be out in the field next week. We're not holding anything back.
That's what, it, it sounded like we were talking about short staff and holding things back. And I wanted to clarify, we're not holding things back. We're opening it up for, for people. It's just that there's a, maybe a floodwater of things that's going to open up. So we don't want to overwhelm those four individuals so that they can't keep up with, with the pit-up demand. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. What I was, that's completely correct. This series of questions previously by Councilmember Nash, I think were a scenario of, asking me for scenarios where we may have a reduction in those four inspectors. So we've got four inspectors, all four of them will be in the field on Monday if the, if this order is issued today.
Well, I studied through what the, the county said, and I'm impressed. I thought it was very thoughtful. And I think we're all adults. I think no one wants to get this disease. No one wants it to spread through our community. And I'm delighted that we have gardeners coming back. I'm delighted that we have people able to finish their homes and finish maybe even the apartments that people are looking forward to moving into. And I like the fact that we have a preference for moving forward for the individual homeowners that might have not as much financial cushion to handle all the things that they've had to handle through the COVID-19 times. You know, and I, and I realize, even if you look at the Guild, if the Guild gets, gets delayed, that also impacts the businesses around the Guild. And every, every single building, everything has its own story of impact. And I don't mean to make light of that. But I, I was just expressing that I, I do appreciate the focus on the individual families, because I think they've been very hard-hit. And as, as leaders in the community, it's been, we've had to make some very difficult, very difficult decisions. And I'm really happy that we're, you know, the numbers show. We were, I think a lot of us were on the call today with the, the county manager, who was saying the numbers have shown that this is actually working, that we have fewer cases. And so I'm, I'm happy with what I see so far in, in terms of the priorities. I can't imagine we're going to have a problem with masks, but you never know what's going to happen in the future. Is there anything, Justin, that is not going to be open or that's in a secondary phase in terms of building?
So in terms of construction activity, as of Monday, any job sites could, could open up. I need to comply with the protocols, and the city will be strongly encouraging, making sure that people are, are in compliance. There, there's still a series of, the, the city still has limited services. So City Hall is closed. There's still more permit activity that we need to, we're ramping up. So our absolute focus now are projects that are under construction. And so that's where we're devoting our energy, and we'll start rolling things out in phases over the coming weeks. So it's currently under construction. The next set would be projects that, where there's a permit ready to be issued. And then we would work on the full plan review of subsequent permits. So it's, but our focus now are on active construction sites.
Okay. I see Councilmember Mueller has his hand up. So I'll finish my questions in a, in a, in a bit. I'll let him jump in and ask questions.
Councilmember Mueller?
I didn't have questions so much as a few comments. So I wanted to, I wanted to thank the residents when we did this. You know, once we explained why it was coming down, really accepted it. And it was, it's not an easy thing. It's been a sacrifice for the community to do this. And Menlo Park, we did become more restrictive a little earlier than the communities around us. But when we did that, we knew which way the curve was going, and we knew that they would be joining us shortly, and the county would be doing it shortly. So it was really, and if you look at our numbers in Menlo Park, we have significantly more infections in Menlo Park, the communities of Blackside, throughout Blacksize, through San Mateo County, because of our proximity, both probably to Stanford and Santa Clara County. That's the case. And if you, and so if you were to look at our numbers and compare them to, say, Belmont or St. Carlos or similar communities, we have almost double and triple the infections that they have. So I'm proud of what we did, the time we did it, especially in light of the fact that our PPE was running low throughout the county. That being said, you know, when we, when folks reached out to us in our city and asked why, the vast majority of people made great sacrifice and understood, accepted that we needed to do it. And so we are just incredibly grateful to them for both protecting their neighbors and protecting our city staff. And so we need to, it's important and relevant to say that now. As we're opening up, the one thing that I just want to say that everyone's aware of, and again, it's not, I'm not sure everyone is looking at the data every day, but it's important for people to understand that we are by no means out of the wood. And if you look at new cases every day, they're not, they're not so much going down. And if you look at new cases every day, they're not, they're not so much going down right now as they've leveled off to an acceptable level, where people, we feel, the public health experts feel that we can take precaution to open to see if we can keep that instant rate of spread such that it can stay below a certain level within the community and doesn't get out of control. But that, what that means is, it's akin to a fire. It's like you had a barbecue in your backyard and there was a big fire. We've got it down to hot coals. It's not hot coals right now. What that means is that everybody, it's really important that everyone actually adheres to the precautions that are being set out by the public health authority, because if that flame starts to pop up again, we're all going to go back, we're all going to go back to the start-up. And no one wants to be in that position. And so our inspectors are going to be out and looking to make sure that everyone's there and complying like that. But I want people to understand that there is that chance that we're going to have to start over again if it starts to get out of control. So it's really important that everyone on job sites are incredibly vigilant in doing that, so we don't end up in that position. And if we do, we apologize in advance, because no one in the city, pardon, none of us wanted to be in the position of shutting down and opening back up again. It's, the public health authorities have made the decision to that it's worth it for all those who had so much riding on the line that we could, that we could do this at a specific incidence rate that would be acceptable. So I just wanted to back up, both acknowledge the past, thank people for it, acknowledge where we are in the present. And I wanted to thank our city staff. It's been a difficult, this has been an incredibly difficult time period. And for those who are in the public who are thinking, who have been incredibly frustrated, just know, here in the city, the budget's shortfalls we're seeing by pausing all of this work for the amount of time we have are significant and impacting people's lives in a way that isn't positive. This has been a shared burden across the community. And so, but we're excited to get things open again. Really, we just want to thank you for your patience and thank you for your sacrifices we went through. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. A question for you, Justin, could you, at a high level, just explain like how the inspectors will be approaching their work in ways that will be different than the status quo? I mean, I read through some of the county sort of guidelines, you know, safety protocols, but I just want to get a sense of, again, because as has been shared, we're obviously not out of the woods yet. In what ways, not in details, but again, just at a high level, will these inspectors be out there and be doing their work differently than they have before the situation arose?
Yes. Actually, with that, I would probably want to turn to Chuck Andrews, our Assistant Community Development Director, Building Official, to be able to help with that, if that's okay? Chuck, I'll turn off.
I will be bringing Chuck online in just one moment. Chuck, you should have the ability to engage your microphone and webcam at this time.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me? Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. My name is Chuck Andrews. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director of Building. And in answering councilmember Combs' question, we have a certain set of guidelines that the county has given us. In addition to those guidelines, we will be assessing the spaces that we will be entering for confined space in tight areas. We're going to follow all of those safe working practices while conducting inspections. We're going to be wearing gloves, masks, shoe covers, and safety glasses to minimize contact. We're going to maintain social distancing at all times. We're actually going to go above and beyond the county order. We're going to go to 10 feet versus 6 feet. The inspector has the ability to go ahead and postpone and reschedule any inspections that are deemed unsafe. And so we're going to allow our inspectors to do that as well. Inspectors are going to stick to the time allotted for each inspection, and they're going to utilize virtual inspections as outlined in the building action plan that we have, that we have currently. Those are just some of the safe practices that we are going to do above and beyond the actual order itself. Does that answer your question, councilmember Combs? Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any other questions? Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we talk about the hit financially on the community and also the hit on our budget that we are and have been discussing. I don't want to overwhelm the inspectors, but I also don't want to hold back people getting permits to redo their house. One of my neighbors commented that she's worried that her kids will be in college before they finish the house at the rate this is going. It helps people's quality of life to be able to do work on their homes, and it also helps, frankly, the budget of the city to bring in the permitting fees and let people at least somewhat get back to work. I know it's very difficult to predict the future, but how much do you think it's, we're going to be able to let new permits go out and let people put in the applications for, whether it's remodeling or building new homes?
I'll go ahead and-
Safely.
All right. I'll go ahead and answer that question as well. So currently, we have about 25 permits to be issued this next week. That's a significant amount. We have, we have been working behind the scenes in trying to get these items ready so that we can issue these permits out. As far as new permits are concerned, we are going to start accepting permits the week of 5/11. It just gives us a chance to go ahead and get these issued permits out to get, to get the economy rolling, and then we're going to come back for new applications starting on 5/11.
And is that all permits? I mean, I remember from my own experience, I had to have a permit to fix a crack in the sidewalk. You know, they're big, they're permits and they're permits. And I was wondering how you're going to, if there's going to be a priority on the low-hanging fruit, or if it was going to be first-come, first-served, or how are you going to make those choices?
So, so we're going to make those choices. We have an ongoing list of priority, and the priority right now is with residential and single-family homes. And then we're going to go to multifamily and commercial after that. And so we've already got a priority list in the bank right now.
So within the single-family homes, there's no priority for the little single things versus the full-on remodel?
No, we have, we're doing it on, based on a timeline of when the permits were submitted into us. And so we're taking it as we receive the permits, then as we, I'm sorry, as we receive the applications, they're going to go out, they're going to go out in that manner and order from a date received.
Okay, that sounds fair. All right. Thank you very much. I know it's going to make a lot of people very happy to be able to move forward on their homes.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, I have a question. Is there any place on the website that you'll post the priority list?
We haven't done that yet, but that's, that's a possibility that we can go ahead and do that. We already have ongoing lists right now of permits to be issued out. So if that is a request, then we can accommodate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just a follow-up on that. One of the things I've seen and learned through this process is explaining why, not just passing along a decision. And as much as we can, you yourselves and then the people that are doing the communications for the city, it is important not to just say, "We're doing 10 feet," or "We're doing in this order," or "We're doing whatever," but where we can explain the thought behind it, explain that it's not just arbitrary decisions that are made to help the inspector be safer or for other reasons. I was just going to say, the more transparency, the more we can explain, the more we can really communicate. I think people, to councilmember Mueller's point, people are much more tolerant and patient when they understand why.
Thank you, councilmember Carlton. I have a clarifying question. I believe this is for Mr. Murphy regarding the order. And that is, the number of COVID cases increases significantly on page D5. And I just wanted to find out, is that the state COVID-19 cases, the county or the city? At which numbers we will be using to determine if we would change our order based on the increase?
Yeah, I'd be happy to kind of consult with others that helped in preparing this, but my thought would be, it would be at the kind of the county sub-region level. So I think it would be more than just the city of Menlo Park. I think we would start locally first, city now that the county is releasing data by zip code, which just was in the past couple of days, county, and then the region. I don't think this is a matter of the state level. I think it's more the county, county level.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any other questions? No, I guess we are all comfortable moving forward. And I appreciate all of the questions and definitely the public comment and the work that the staff has done so that they can actually get back to work with our residential construction coming this Monday, which I'm sure people are excited about. So on that note, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, councilmember Nash, for the second. For clarification on the record, are we also adding the direction to add the priority list to the website, to this motion?
Yes.
Do we have council consensus around that? Wonderful. Thank you. So we have a first-
Quick question. When we say priority list, is this, are we talking about like the addresses, people, actual addresses of where this, these projects are happening, or just, just, okay, totally fair. Yeah. Please continue.
So just the order of how the city is going to proceed with prioritizing?
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is first by councilmember Carlton, second by councilmember Nash, by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And at this time, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And thanks, staff, as well.
You guys have a great weekend.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. You too.